Good evening, welcome. This is our school board meeting at 7:00 PM on February 20th, 2024. Item A, we're going to call to order Declaration of a Quorum, seven members present. Welcome, everybody. Brings us to item C, C1, our Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Flag, a moment of silence.
Hi, my name is Beth Crell. I'm one of the Assistant Principals at Pecan Trail, and I have two incredible sixth-grade students to do the pledge today. We have Rhea Breeden and Axel Kane.
Hi, I'm Rhea Breeden. I am a sixth-grade student at Pecan Trail, and my favorite thing about being in Sound of Music is moving people through singing and music and expressing my emotions through it. Another thing I love at Pecan Trail is that the teachers are so kind and invested in our learning and mental well-being and are very accepting. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Axel Kane. I'm a sixth-grade at Pecan Trail, and my favorite thing about being in Sound of Music is the people like the things that I do. We have the same interests. Another thing I like about being at PT is the gifted and talented classes. They're very fun.
Hey, guys, good evening. My name is Jeremy Stewart. I'm the very proud principal at Welber Middle School here in College Station ISD. I've got two wonderful Warhawks who are going to introduce themselves to you and lead us in our pledges this evening.
Hello, my name is Shiler Anderson. I'm going to Welber Middle School at this moment, and I am a House Team Leader of the House of Odysia. And what my favorite part of the House Teams is that how organized it is, the House Team Leader retreats, and how we get to meet new people about every single day. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Micah Field, and I'm an eighth-grader at Welber. I am a House Team Leader for the House of Inventa, which is the House of Integrity. And just one of the big things that I love about Welber is the fine arts involvement. I do theater and choir, and I really enjoy being able to take part in things like the musical outside of school and then doing things like choir concerts and UIL for theater. It's a lot of fun. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for the moment of silence.
Thank you.
We would like to, at this point, recognize some of the incredible teachers at Pecan Trail, the Fine Arts Directors who work tirelessly on the musical every year. They show these kids collaboration, determination, and grit, and they really do open the door for a lifelong love of performing and music. Thank you. We would like to recognize Stephanie Morris. Who is... There she is. She is just one of the team members. We also would like to recognize the people who are not here, Roy Rodriguez, Sarah Campbell, Gail Lewis. Is there anybody else I'm missing out?
I think you got all of us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hey, guys, so I've got the esteemed pleasure of recognizing two remarkable educators at Welber Middle School. I've got Ms. Cassie Doucette, Ms. Carrie White. Y'all come up here so I can embarrass you a little bit. So these two ladies are a part of our campus's guiding coalition, and what does that mean? They're leading some initiatives that really meeting kids where they are as they are. And some of the ways they do that, and I think it's outstanding the way they do this, so they take this assessment work that they're doing in their collaborative teams, and they get the data back from their kids, and they're sorting it, like the kids who are not getting it and the kids who are getting it. And what they're doing in these collaborative moments where they meet every single day is developing these really targeted lessons that say, "All right, Jeremy, you're the kid who's not getting it. We're going to make sure that you can get some instruction so you can close the gaps." But on the other side of the coin that they also do a remarkable job at is making sure that we're going to push the envelope for the kids who are already getting it, because we all know that there's kids in the classroom who are bright kids, but they don't deserve to be bored in the class, so we want to push them and make sure they're thinking at high levels as well. And so they're doing this work that's just astounding, and it really makes not only our campus a better place, it makes me a better principal, so thank you for that. But most importantly, what I would like to say is you guys are cultivating good humans, and that's what we're about at Welber Middle School, so thank you for what you do. I'm proud of you.
Yeah, this time, I was... I thought we were doing the kids first. This is the first week in February is National School Counseling Week, and we wanted to take a moment just to recognize our counselors. We did not ask them to come up tonight. I did not want to take another night off of their week time with their family. And I've asked Ms. Chrissy Hester, who is our Executive Director of Student Services, and I could go on with about 50 other titles. She does pretty much everything. To speak briefly... Right here is fine. You want to go right here? That way you're closer to everybody. So you're in front of everybody.
Oh, I gotta be in front, especially Mr. Horak. I can't see you, so I have to go like this. Okay? Okay. Well, y'all start out saying, "Good evening, Mr. Horak, Dr. Harkrider, members of the board. I stand before you tonight with great pride and immense gratitude to acknowledge and recognize a group of individuals who play a pivotal role in shaping the lives of our students and contributing to the overall success of our educational community, our school counselors. School counselors wear many hats, taking on diverse roles to ensure success and happiness of our students. They are mentors, advocates, and confidants, often with a listening ear and a helping hand in times of need. Their work is multifaceted and often goes unrecognized, yet it is the cornerstone of a thriving school district. In the face of the challenges and uncertainties of an ever-evolving landscape of public education, our school counselors stand as beacons of stability. They go above and beyond their designated duties, always willing to do whatever it takes to ensure that the students have the support they need to excel academically and to navigate the complexities of adolescents. Their efforts extend far beyond the classroom, reaching into the hearts and minds of students, staff, and parents alike. They are the architects of a healthy and supportive school culture, fostering an environment where everybody, everybody feels individually valued and understood. Through their unending devotion in learning and mental health, they contribute significantly to the holistic development of our community. Tonight, let's take a moment to honor and express our gratitude to these remarkable individuals who selfishly dedicate themselves to the betterment of others. Their impact is immeasurable; their influence extends far beyond the walls of our schools. Thank you, school counselors, for your tireless efforts and your unwavering support and your boundless dedication to the lives of our students. Your work is truly the foundation upon which the future of our community is built. Thank you, counselors." I'll send this to them, so they'll know I sent it to them. Thank you.
And I also want to add, when I was hired in June, Chrissy and I met right here. She introduced herself. She said, "I am everybody's counselor in College Station ISD, and after one week on the job, I will be your counselor." And she did not lie. She is my counselor.
And I know the secrets.
All right, we're going to continue our recognitions portion of the meeting with some student recognitions. Thirteen CSISD high school music students recently earned All-State Honors through the Texas Music Educators Association, TMEA, audition process. Students began the process of competing in the fall semester and advanced through a series of rigorous competition rounds to eventually earn this performance distinction. Earning All-State Honors is one of the highest distinctions a Texas music student can receive. Approximately 1,875 students were selected to receive the honor through the audition process that began with more than 70,000 students from across the state. Approximately 2.6% of students who went through the audition process earned All-State Honors. The students attended the TMEA clinic and convention on February 7th through 10th in San Antonio, where they worked with world-class conductors to present all-state concerts. TMEA is the largest music education conference of its kind in the world. Students, I'm going to call your name, and when I call your name, if you'll come up to the side over here to Dr. Harkrider and Ms. Carrie and receive a certificate and shake hands with the board members, and if you'll wait over here on the side, we'll get a group picture when we're all done. We'll start with Cooper Allen, College Station High School. Callie Caffey, A&amp;M Consolidated. Mauricia Garcia, College Station. Andrew Kim, College Station. Minhyung Kim, College Station. Masado Koya, A&amp;M Consolidated. Cynthia Kulo, A&amp;M Consolidated. Sawa Miyamoto, College Station. Ryo Miyamoto, College Station. Parker Morzaka, A&amp;M Consolidated, sorry, Parker. David Paul, College Station High School. Christina Yum, A&amp;M Consolidated. And Joshua Joe, College Station High School.
All right, y'all come take a picture over here. One picture for me and one picture for your parents. Here we go. One, two.
All right, guys, you can have a seat. Let's give them a hand one more time. We have one more student recognition. College Station High School sophomore Cynthia Zhao was recently selected to be a part of the Texas Art Education Association's Youth Art Month Spring Exhibition. The exhibit showcases pre-K through 12th grade works of art from across the state of Texas. Student art from around the state will be exhibited at the Bullock Texas State History Museum in Austin during the month of March, which is Youth Art Month, a nationally-recognized program that emphasizes the value of art education for all children, encourages support for quality school art programs, and promotes the importance of art appreciation for all people. The Texas Art Education Association has been a leader in youth art month celebrations since the program began in 1961. Cynthia Zhao, College Station High School.
Cynthia was not able to make it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I have her artwork here, and your parents are all enjoying it.
Okay, let's give her a hand. All right, and that concludes our student recognitions portion.
That'll bring us to item C3, where we want to recognize the artwork there at the back of our boardroom from the students at Pecan Trail and Welber Middle School. Obviously, our art program is flourishing, so make sure y'all check those out before you leave this evening. Brings us to item D, D1, Board Reports. Who'd like to go first?
I'll start. DIC met last week on Valentine's Day, and we just really got two updates, two program updates. One was from the, you know, early childhood education. That's the early head start, head start and pre-K programs and all that they do for those young kids. And then we also got a lot of different things that are encompassed under special services, things like Title I, the state comp ed, hold harmless support... or no, that's... yes, harmless support. I'm not sure I can read my handwriting. A lot of bilingual services and GT services, those special services that our district does to meet those special needs of our students. So just got those two updates.
The Student Health Advisory Council met back on the 7th, and a couple items that came out of that particular meeting were, one, there is going to be, in next month, I believe, a Olympics amongst all of the elementary schools, competing in some track and field events. That'll be pretty exciting. Also, in the public forum portion, a couple of parents or community members shared some concerns about cellphone usage on campuses, I should say. And also, a member of the council who is involved, the MPO, shared that the Brazos County Metropolitan Planning Organization is currently conducting a survey on transportation safety issues, and in particular, part of that is how it affects schools and safety around the schools. And so if you have any interest in taking that survey, you can go to the MPO website, and there's a link listed there for that. And then, last but not least, I think next month at our school board meeting, Mr. Starnes will be giving a presentation on Shaq for the board.
So, Education Foundation, want to thank St. Joseph Health for a title sponsor, 50 Men Who Can Cook, and our 155 volunteers that helped put on that event. We had 59 booths, we had around 1,400 guests, which is a little bit less than we had. We upped the ticket price just a little bit because it's the best deal and funnest thing in town, and we still raised over $300,000 for 50 Men Who Can Cook. So phenomenal event. Thank you to all the people who helped put that on, and Education Foundation, and all of our sponsors. It was awesome.
And I just have to say, the smoked chicken enchiladas were delicious.
Probably the best thing there.
I'm proud. Better than Cheez Whiz.
Wow.
There were two flavors of cheese.
Austin, I think she's talking to you. I don't know. I got a lot of compliments on our Cheez Whiz. Thank you.
We'll pass it to you for that now. Oh, now you got one?
And I had one thing to point out, the Olympics that are happening with elementary schools, that's actually an Education Foundation grant, so...
And that's in May. Sorry, May 8th, yeah, first time ever we're going to do a track and field Olympics for all the elementary schools to compete against each other. Should be a lot of fun.
Awesome. Just a few things on my end. We ended the fourth, six weeks last Friday, which is kind of crazy that we are approaching March this quickly. We've got a couple of weeks, and our spring break will be March 11th through the 15th, and then our March school board meeting will be when we return Tuesday, March 19th.
All right, that brings us to item E, Hearing of Citizens. I have one card at this moment. During this time, public comments are welcome. The Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers regarding items not on the agenda. Comments related to items on the agenda may be discussed during deliberations on that specific agenda item. Please complete the note card and give it to the executive assistant. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Those needing an interpreter may have up to six minutes. Each person has one opportunity at the microphone regardless of minutes used. Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. The executive assistant will time the comments and alert the president when time has expired. The board asks that those addressing the board refrain from derogatory comments. And I believe we have Titia Nowak. This... Yes?
I probably have to pull this way down. Sorry if you can't see me back there. Okay. Good evening. My name is Titia Nowak, and I'm a proud parent of a Consol graduate and a Consol sophomore. I'd like to start by thanking the board and administration for recognizing the urgent needs of this bond and for getting it back out to our community. My husband and I both work with College Station schools, and we have personally experienced the safety and functionality concerns at both high schools. We attend sporting events in stands with no handrails and steps with cracks in them. I've seen grandparents not able to walk up to the seats next to their family. I've witnessed falls. The concession stand is always backed up, creating issues trying to enter or exit the stadium. I deliver Gatorade to the athletic training room, and the team in the weight room has to stop working out so I can get through. I've seen the training room so full that kids are being treated on the floor, and this is just at Consol. I've helped take pictures on the Cougar Field and have witnessed the peeling track and leaks in the press box. I've helped take pictures on flooded baseball and softball fields at both schools. I wish the community had a better understanding of the needs, lack of functionality, safety, and repairs needed at these facilities. These facilities are used by more than football. Soccer, band, dance, cheer, choir, and student council, all at one time or another, use these facilities. Their families sit in stands, use the restroom, and concession stands. If our baseball and softball fields were turfed, this would allow more practice time, eliminate rainouts, as well as provide an opportunity for other sports and organizations to utilize these fields. Extracurricular activities play a huge role in education, and my own children don't go to school because they love English. They go because they want to be a part of their team, but they know they had to take education serious if they wanted to play. Even though passing these bonds will not directly affect my sophomore, I feel like this needs to be handled now to provide opportunities for our intermediate and elementary students. These activities teach kids how to work as a team, become leaders, learn discipline and time management, and how to be a part of something bigger than themselves. It gives them the skills they need to become successful. This is not just a football bond or a bond to build state-of-the-art facilities. It is not a maroon or a purple bond. It's a bond centered around the safety and functionality of our facilities that contribute to the success of all College Station students. It's a bond that addresses the safety needs of our students, siblings, parents, grandparents, and the stands cheering on all of our students. It's a bond that provides all of our students and families the opportunity to have the extracurricular experience they deserve. Again, I would like to thank the bond and this administration for recognizing these needs and for keeping the best interest of our students at the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll bring us to item F, Consent Agenda. Those items are item G, J3 through J10, K6, and K7.
Move to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Decker, second by Dr. Payne. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion carries 7-0. Brings us to item H, H1, Receive a Report on Athletics in CSISD from Athletic Director
Good evening, Mr. Horak, Dr. Harkrider, and the board. Thanks for having me. Kevin Starnes, the Athletic Director, and so taking a few minutes tonight to kind of give you an update on our program or our department. Some things we're going to cover tonight are our mission and goals as a department, participation numbers at our five secondary campuses athletically, our budget successes this year at our comprehensive high schools, our athletic initiatives, and then some opportunities for growth. And I'm also going to have a couple of guest speakers at the end there. So first, before I get into this, I really want to recognize my Assistant Athletic Director, Megan Simak. She does a fantastic job. She's not here right now because she's at a playoff basketball game down the road. So the Tigers are playing tonight. And then I've got two bookkeepers, and I think one of them is keeping a clock for one of the games we're hosting tonight. And then Zach and Pam, our clerks at each campus, each of our high school campuses. Can't do my job without them. They do a fantastic job, and so I wanted to make sure that I recognized them. So you can read the mission yourself. Basically, to summarize it, it is, "We want to help support the growth of the all-around student. We think that athletics is a great opportunity for the students coming and participating in our programs to learn work ethic, discipline, honesty, integrity, all of those things, how to work collaboratively with others and work with people that aren't like them in a true melting pot situation." And so we think that athletics is a great conduit to get them to that successful adult life that we want them to have when they leave us. Our goals, we really want to strengthen our professional development for all of our coaches, including character development with our students. We want to prepare our current assistant coaches to lead as future head coaches. I think the best way for us is we have coaches retire or move on to other opportunities. If we can grow the people that we have currently in place to be prepared to step into those roles, it's on us to do that. And then to compete for improvement in our Lone Star Cup standings. Lone Star Cup is a UIL metric of points that you earn, those through athletics, fine arts, and UIL academics. So it's not just an athletics thing. It is an all-encompassing extracurricular standing. So some participation numbers. These are numbers that I gathered from our coaches asking how many kids were in each program. So currently, at Consol, 1,076 students, and we have 2,176 students enrolled. You can read the numbers yourself, but you can notice that those numbers, approximately half of our enrollment at each of those high schools are involved in an athletic program. At our middle schools, again, same proportion there with 355, 306, and 480. So large amount of participation at all of our five secondary campuses in our athletic The sports that we offer in CSISD, I get this question quite a bit. What do we offer? Well, we offer basically everything, and so we've got those listed. Some we offer only at the high school level, some we offer at the middle school level as well as the high school level. And so you can read down this list, and so one thing is, not a lot of people know that we have a gymnastics team. Gymnastics, we do have a team at Consol and at CSHS, and they practice offsite, but they are in our programs. And then we do have a swimming and diving, and that's just at Consol. So you can read through these, and we've got a lot of opportunities for kids to find their niche and find where their talent is. Our budget, so, you know, when looking at this and trying to construct a slide that kind of tells the whole story and not just what our beginning of year budget is, really, when you look at what it costs us to host games, so what I did is I went through and ran a report for all of the games that we host, middle school and high school. This includes security and officials. We spent almost $190,000, okay? Travel expenses, so this is where our teams leave College Station, the city of College Station, they go compete at another school. This could be tournaments, or this could be individual games. So you've got buses, whether it be charter buses or Yellow Dogs, and then meals, entry fees for tournaments. We spent, you know, approximately $635,000. Our supply budget... Our supply budgets, that is uniforms, that's balls, that's goals, that's nets, it could be anything that our coaches need to facilitate a sport and equip our kids with what they need to compete, that's a little over $700,000. And so our overall budget is 1.8 and change there. But then when you add up all of what it costs to host, what it costs to travel and compete, as well as to put, you know, bags and uniforms on our kids, it's pretty close to that number. But then also, gate proceeds back to CSISD. I get asked all the time that when people pay entry into a football game, does athletics get that money? We do not. That goes back into the general fund. And so last year, when we completed the year, almost $500,000 from gate revenue went back into the general fund. And so it's not, nothing in public ed is profitable, but there is something that we do bring in revenue. So successes this year, at the top there, you'll see the Lone Star Cup standings for Kennesaw. Currently, the last tally that the UIL released, they were in 36th place out of 253 schools in Texas at the 5A level. And so that's a great start. We're looking for them to move up in the rankings in the next release. In the fall, you had a football team that went to the Region III final game. Cross country, we had a girls' team that qualified for state. And then the team tennis went to the second round. Our boys' basketball team is currently playing, as I said, but they were district champs. They went as the second seed because of a tiebreaker, but they were district champions. Wrestling, we had four kids qualify for state at Kennesaw, and we did have a state champion, 132-pound state champion. Swim and dive, they participated in Austin at the end of this week. I'll be there. They had 17 kids qualify for the state meet, so we're not sure. Hopefully, they'll bring home some hardware as well. Currently, our soccer teams at Kennesaw, both are in first place in the standings in district. For CSHS, in the first release, they were seventh place out of 253 schools in the Lone Star Cup standings. They had a fantastic fall. They won district in every sport in the fall, football, volleyball, cross country, and tennis. And then you can see that football, Region III semifinalist volleyball made it to the regional tournament. Cross country took both the boys and the girls to the state meet, which is awesome. And then our team tennis, they made it to the Region III final game. So right now, basketball, they made the playoffs. Unfortunately, they lost last night but had a great season, hadn't made the playoffs for a few years prior to this. And so they've done a great job. Coach Reese's done a great job there. Wrestling, they had two kids qualify for the state tournament. And then soccer currently, the girls are in fifth place. They're right there. There's a bundle of teams close in record, and then the boys are currently in second place. So very, very successful competitive athletic programs at our high school levels, which is probably why we have so many kids participate in our programs because they're so successful. They want to be a part of it. Some other initiatives that we have in place, we're big on professional development. So at the beginning of the year, we have an all-coaches meeting where I get all of our coaches across CSISD in this room or a room big enough for us all. And we spend all day going over expectations, compliance, but then also professional development. And so we go over our athletic handbook for coaches. We had several coaches panels where we had, we have a lot of wisdom in our coaches currently on staff, and so being able to bring them up to the front of the room and share those insights and experiences with our other coaches. We do work on UIL compliance so that we're making sure that we are following UIL regulations and rules. And then we also had Mr. Sutherd come in. He's also an official. And so he came in and gave us a presentation on how to effectively communicate with officials as coaches. So we can always get better there. One thing that we, Coach Simak and I really collaborated on, and both are passionate about this, is our Aspiring Head Coaches Academy. This is the first year we had it. We have 10 coaches that are currently going through the program. So some things that we talk about are district and state-level compliance, effective management of a program when dealing with maybe employees, assistant coaches, as well as players and parents. Participants are creating artifacts for future opportunities, so every meeting they have to create something else, whether it be a resume, or a presentation, or a portfolio, or a calendar. So we're really preparing them for those opportunities. We don't want them to leave, but if they, if life guides them away from us and they're looking for a head coaching job, we want them to be equipped. My philosophy is if we can make them better, then our kids will get better in that way. They will end this program with a mock interview for a head coaching position with Coach Simak and I, and then we'll offer them feedback. Other initiatives, last year when I came on, we installed the two words "character development" curriculum. That's all online. A lot of our programs are using it. If they're not using it, then they're supplementing it with other curriculums, but it is an expectation that all of our programs are doing character development. So we have coordinator meetings, biweekly, monthly. We are currently doing a book study, The Power of a Positive Team, currently by John Gordon, but we've done other books in the past already. One thing that we started last year and we carried it through this year is an all-coaches holiday party. So again, all the coaches across the district. This year, we were at Grand Station, and we had over 100 people show up, the coaches and their spouses, and we had a good time. Our booster clubs contributed some gift cards right before the holidays. That's fantastic, and they gave over $2,000 worth of gift cards that we were able to raffle or door prize out. I installed a new coaches evaluation system in our, to provide feedback for our coaches, not as a gotcha, but as a we always need to get better. We have our booster youth programs through our football programs with the Ambush and then the Cooper Troopers. We did this year do a ninth-grade athletics orientation presentation just to help ease the anxiety from transitioning from a middle schooler to a high schooler. And then the Little Olympics. So the Little Olympics is really the brainchild of two of our track coaches and Megan Simak. So the two track coaches really, you know, kind of put this idea together, came to Megan and pitched it to her. She loved it, and so they, those three have really ran with it, and I've supported where I could. But they have really championed this and got this going. And so the vision that they had is to create an event that connects our community through track and field-related competition. And so basically, at each elementary campus, they will have trials, timed trials, where the kids will all compete. All of them will have an opportunity. And then the top, the fastest kids in those different events will all converge on May 8th at Tiger Field and compete against each other. And they'll have awards and medals. There's going to be a, there's going to be a community portion where they can walk, but we really want just our community to come together and it be an exciting time. And so that's, we're really excited about that, and more information to come as far as the details on that. So celebration is an opportunity for growth. So just a couple of things from me, and then I'll hand it off to Coach Schmidt and Coach Pryor. But first thing, I've been in other districts where we have pre-athletics, so at intermediate schools. Typically, it's sixth grade because sixth grade in other districts is middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth. But I have seen it at intermediate schools where pre-athletics is actually a different PE class from your PE classes. So people who know they're going to go into athletics at the middle school would enroll in those pre-athletic classes, and so they would be a little bit more challenging and hopefully get them more prepared for the middle school athletic experience. Another thing that I wanted to put on your radar, I know we're going to bond in May, and I'm not trying to oversight that and put something else on your radar, but through a meeting with the UIL that I was in, with Ray Zapata, who's the UIL AD, he said that in the summer of 2025, they're going to, state is going to mandate a certain heat policy that all districts across Texas have to follow. Well, we know, if you've ever been to, let's say, Amarillo, if you've been to Amarillo and you've lived here, you know that those are two very different areas climate-wise, but they are going to have the same metric. And so really, it impacts us a little bit more than it does people in Amarillo. But, so I am putting this on your radar. Down the road, we probably would need to look at an indoor facility because with this mandate, it's going to be a law rule that we have to follow. There is no wiggle room. And currently, they have released the data, so it's based upon the Wet Bulb Globe Temperature Gauge, which nobody really understands. Everybody understands heat index, right? What does it feel like? But Wet Bulb, I can't explain it to you. It takes in humidity and those types of things. And they say it's more accurate on the stress of the individual. But just looking at it, so in 2022, if we follow, once this heat policy is in place, if it was in place in 2022, from July 1 to October 1, so about 92 days, we would have lost 35 days of no practices, and 26 days would have been 60-minute limit practices with no equipment. So that means football, you don't put on a helmet, you don't put on shoulder pads, you don't put on any pads, your shorts and t-shirt, okay? And a 60-minute limit with a 20-minute break. So really, it's 40 minutes. And that was in 2022. This past year, we know how hot it was. So 57 of the 92 days would have been no practice, and then 11 additional days would have been the 60-minute limit. So I just want to put that on your radar as far as that, we may be coming to you later on when there may be a line out the door of people saying, why can't we practice football? And it's a rule, like, it's a law, it's a rule, so we can't do it.
Those limitations also only deal with practice. So on game nights, it doesn't matter what that Wet Globe says you're going to play. So you don't get an opportunity to condition your kids to those elements, but they're going to play on Friday night.
And that's coming from the Health Advisory Committee from the UIL, is what we're being told. So I'm just putting it on your radar. They're gracious enough to give us another year of warning, and then we'll have to abide by that policy.
And where are they headquartered? Because you said line up at the door. I don't think this is the right door to line up at.
I agree. You know, our kids train all year in our elite camp, in our champions camp, and so they're conditioned for our climate here. They can take the humidity. Now, we need to be smart, as we always have been, but I think that for them to put down a blanket policy and really cut our legs out in August and September, it's going to be tough. It's going to be tough. So at that, at this time, maybe Coach Schmidt will brighten the mood here. Coach Schmidt from A&amp;M Consolidated and Coach Pryor from College Station.
Coach Schmidt, go first.
Coach Starnes told me I had three minutes. I felt like I should just have Tisha come back up here and read her deal again, and we can call it done, because that was awesome. So I appreciate everybody being here tonight. My understanding from Coach Starnes is that we're going to attempt to kind of paint you guys a little picture here of what it's like in our fieldhouse on a day-to-day operation basis. So first thing right now I want to talk to you about is kind of, you know, what we're trying to protect and what we're trying to make sure happens. So this first part right here, I'm just going to give you a little bit of data, and this is the football team this year. It could also be the volleyball team, it could also be the basketball team, it could also be the softball team, it could be whoever, okay? So 2023 football season, we had 220 football players in our program. This represents a little over 20% of the male population at A&amp;M Consolidated High School. So if we're just talking football, it's a big, big student population. We're talking more than football. We're talking all of our sports. We had 10 varsity football players and trainers make up two of these 10 that were academic all-state. We had 29 varsity football players, academic all-district. We had 25 varsity football players earn all-district honors. We had seven players earn all Brazos Valley honors, three varsity players earn all-state honors, and we only lost one varsity football player this year to grades at the end of the first six weeks. So athletics matter. I should say extracurricular activities matter. It's important to what we're trying to accomplish here. My point being that we want our students to be involved in extracurricular activities. Our facilities matter to us. We don't want to lose student athletes because we can't properly accommodate them. So within our facilities at A&amp;M Consolidated High School, this would just be kind of on a day-to-day basis what you would see if you came into our building. Number one, our locker rooms generally overcrowded. This is football locker rooms, baseball locker rooms, wrestling locker rooms, track locker, take a pick, all right? Locker rooms are generally overcrowded. Poor design and space of the lockers. Just an example right here, our JV football locker room has 112 lockers in it. It's in a, basically a 12-by-33 room. Baseball locker room right now, we have about 60 players in our baseball program. We have seven showerheads. So Coach Lennerton has to send our baseball team in, in groups. He sends them in in like groups of three so that they have time to shower before they go to lunch and go to class. Football locker room, 179 total lockers. We have 24 showerheads there. Football players are split between two buildings right now, and this is, this is really, if this bond passes and we can expand, a lot of that is going to be baseball, and so it allows to also move our football players back over into the fieldhouse and baseball, get some super cool new stuff going on over here. Turf on the baseball and softball fields, the lack of turf puts us at a competitive disadvantage because of the loss of practice time. Aside from that, it's not just, if we turf baseball and softball fields, that's also going to help with our summer camps, all right? Because it gives our kids more room to go out and hold their camps, whether it's, whether we've had a rainy day and it allows football to go out there, or soccer to go out there, or band to go out there, whoever the case may be. Obviously, restrooms and concessions, lack of restrooms and concessions at the baseball field are a huge issue. Our training room, I've been coaching for 23 years. This is the first school I've ever been at where a trainer had to implement a appointments. Usually, it's a come-on-in-and-we'll-take-care-of-you. Here, we have to have appointments because we can't accommodate all the kids who need treatment. We also do not have, and this is a huge deal right here, in the fieldhouse, we do not have a powerlifting, it's boys or girls, locker room in the fieldhouse. So our girls, powerlifters, they come in fourth period and they go to the restroom, and it's a restroom to change clothes. Let's see here, and that's about 20 to 25 girls every day during fourth period and/or after school. The handrails at the stadium were already hit on. I can speak directly to two instances this year where someone fell in the stands. One of them happened at soccer right before Christmas break, and the other one happened at our Welcome to the Jungle event before football season started. And then, of course, lines at concession stands, concession stands being too small, restrooms being too small, take a pick. That's probably more than three minutes.
Terry didn't knock you off. You know, so I want to say first, I appreciate you guys and for the leadership that you all have in our district and in our community. I appreciate the bond committee coming forward and spending all that time to determine what the needs were, and we do have a lot of similarities between our two schools, so I won't try to repeat those. I think a couple of things that have been good specifically, well, one specifically for our campus is the recent bond to give us a third gym down the line. I think it's going to be really helpful because we have some overcrowding as well, not near to the extent that they have yet. And in the past, a bond a few times ago, and then back for both campuses where we were able to get turf on our football fields, and just how amazingly valuable that is. And so we both are in the habit, of course, of calling it the football field, and I think that's what most people call it. But football is just a fraction of who's out there all the time using those facilities. When it rains, it doesn't matter. We don't have to stay off of it, and some of you, of course, have been in the community a long time or can remember back to your others where you had grass, and it made it very difficult to get other groups out there, or the soccer team can't practice during football season because you're going to tear up the field for the football team and vice versa. So I think those things have been great, and I do applaud the bond committee for really weighing the merits of what we need, and I'd encourage anybody to do that. And I know Coach Starnes or Coach Schmidt or myself would be happy to show you around, explain things, and see where we are. Through the successes that we've had in the leadership of our district, as you saw, we have nearly half of our middle school students and half of our high school students are involved in athletics in some capacity. I'd love for a lot of them to play football. I'd love for them all to be in athletics, but really, my desire is for students to find a home, whether it's through fine arts, as we heard earlier, or art, or athletics. And finding a home in high school, in middle school, is like, is critical and crucial, and as both of our schools grow and we have more and more needs, we've got to meet those needs, and we've got to be able to expand our programs and... needs and we've got to be able to expand our programs and, and provide for that. A couple of specific safety needs and, and maintenance needs that we have at our campus. Our track is, is in bad shape. It needs to be replaced badly. It's got asphalt showing through that. We've had to cancel some meets. We were supposed to host the district meet and it's not in a, in a condition to do that because it gets so much use, because so many people are out there on it, which is awesome, but it, it wears it out. Also our press box has, has leaking issues and those things have to be addressed. There are some other things that need to be done in the press box, but obviously we've got to have facilities to keep the water out because that causes further damage. And I think that the, the turf that we've seen and the use that we get out of it on our football stadium, when we expand that into the, the diamonds into baseball and softball, we'll, we'll have tremendous amount of use from our students, not just in those two sports, but being able to use that stuff as Coach Schmidt said in the summer with, with other programs as space becomes an issue when we can't go out onto the grass areas. But also in, in relief of not having to do some of the maintenance on those areas because they, they're not maintenance free by any stretch, but, but certainly considerably easier than, than maintaining the grass or the lines or the, the dirt or all the other things that go with that. So again, thank you for, for listening to us. Thank you for your time in our athletic programs. Thank you to the bond committee who's not here. And I do think that when you weigh the merits of what we, what we've got going on and where we, where we anticipate growing into and even where we are now, there is a, a great need. Thank you all.
Okay. So that kind of ends our presentation. Do you have any questions?
Well, I would just kind of a comment, maybe a question I'd expect you to answer it, that part of it today, but I personally, I mean, yes, I love to see the success of the athletic programs, but I really love to see the participation numbers. To me, that is so meaningful because like you prior just said, if we, if every kid in our school district can show up and be in, find their thing that they're involved in, whether it's fine arts, athletics, or an academic or CTE team. I mean, I just think not only is that so much, I mean, not only does it get them to school, but really it's just a growth for them to be a better, well-rounded student. So I love seeing that. And so maybe my question is, obviously our student body has grown over the last decade or so. Have these numbers are like from a percentage wise been similar or, you know, throughout that, is it really, we just kind of grown our, along with the, you know, student body? And again, you may not know that.
Well, not being here before last year, I'm not sure about those numbers, but I, I would say that our percentages are probably a little bit higher than, than a lot of schools. I think our, the, the success of our programs attract others, you know, other students and, and create that buy-in immediately. And so, you know, I think, you know, having the, the percentages that we do is, is kind of special, but I can't speak before last year. I think last year we were very similar in numbers.
Then just to rehash some of the stuff we learned at the bond committee, in addition that 50%, it's, it's not just a football facility, athletic facility. Then you got to add on the bands and the, the bingle bells and the other, the other student facilities that use it. It's really a public facility, not just athletic facility. And then I really liked your point, and I think goes along with a lot of stuff we touched on the workshop. We talked about the whole student and developing character. Athletics says, there's a reason why the military academies require you play a sport, you call your own fouls, you learn to get better and that translates directly in the classroom. And if we remember our Greek history, Plato's lyceum took place in a gym because he said after physical exertion, we best prepare the mind for instruction and acquisition of knowledge. So for those that would say that athletics is not part of academics, historically it's, it's integral to athletics. And I think anybody that's been or raised a teenager would agree with that as well.
Have, have we reached a point at all or is it on the horizon where kids aren't going to be able to participate just because of the lack of, of space in the field house, for instance, or in the gyms or so forth, or kind of where are we at there?
Yes. In certain programs, we have had to start cutting, you know, from probably historically, we haven't had to cut in certain programs. Now we have to cut. We have to look at the amount of teams as far as we, we may be able to field four baseball teams. I have no idea. To be honest with you, the feasibility of that, but if we wanted to, we couldn't because of the limited amount of space. And so, and I think that's, that's, you know, with the bond that did pass Prop A, that's going to expand our high schools to 2,700 apiece. We're at 2176 and 2209. So you add 500 kids, half of those kids are going to be involved in our athletic programs statistically. So you're going to add about 250 more kids to our current programs. There's, there's no way.
So good question, Mr. Ben, because you're talking about limiting time when, when people are still, when young people are still developing, right? And they're trying to find their sport, maybe they haven't found it yet or they're still growing into their bodies and we're going to tell them they can't play because we don't have space.
That's correct.
That was my question with you and Dr. Harkrider coming from other school districts. We're a five A school, two part. Do we have the capacity that's normal to a five A school? And then do we have the quality and safety of the facilities that's normal to a five A school?
My opinion is, is we are behind. I think that in a lot of ways, College Station ISD is a flagship district. And I think that in some of our facilities, we are not, we fall short of that standard. And so I think it's, it's very contradictory that we're, we shout from the rooftops that we are the greatest in these areas, but then we're okay, we're just going to settle for mediocrity or even below that low standards in other areas. That's my opinion. Dr. Harker, I don't know.
Yeah. I think if you just take the teams in our, I'll just say non-football districts because I'm, I'm more familiar with the teams that are in baseball, basketball, softball, Tomball, Montgomery, Magnolia, we're drastically behind. Yeah. And, and you know, nothing happens overnight. I think we're, we're kind of in a position as a district, we've done a little bit here and a little bit there, but just not enough to keep pace. So now you're kind of at a point where you have several things that you have, have to do. I think our taxpayers a lot of times get confused on, you know, why can't you just do that with your, with your regular budget? And, you know, we could if, if it, if it didn't cost, you know, one and a half million dollars to turf a baseball or softball field, you know, but some of these upgrades as well is, is cost savings to us. You know, John and his teams, if we have turf on four facilities, baseball, softball at each high school, our grounds crew never have to go out to that field. About once a month, they have a device that they go across it that picks up all the debris and stuff on the field, but we're not watering it, we're not painting it, we're, we're not fertilizing it, we're not planting ryegrass to grow in the winter. So all of that maintenance, those grounds crew can spend time on campuses or other projects that John Renee and their team have going. So we don't have to add additional maintenance and operation members to take care of facilities because we just freed up four facilities. Same thing happened when you did the same thing with football. On, on a Thursday or Friday, those guys are there painting, mowing, putting everything up and setting, and it's generally an, an all day deal to get that field prepped for, for game night on a Thursday or Friday night. So yeah, and I think that's the biggest thing is why we have these guys to come. And I think what we want to do, we need to do a better job of, as a school district of, of showing our, and that starts with me, of showing why this is a need. You know, it's not, we're not trying to keep up with Magnolia, Tomball or Montgomery, but our kids are at a distinct disadvantage with our current facilities and a lack of space, but you see how our kids are performing. So my question becomes if you level the playing field, how much better are we going to be?
Well, we added it up. It came to about between $50,000 and $60,000 that we paid to go rent somebody else's baseball and softball fields last year. So $50,000 to $60,000 out of my budget that we spent so our baseball and softball teams could compete. Well, that's a teacher. So, and that's out of the general budget. So if we can supplement that with bond funds, then we get to keep that money in the general budget and therefore could roll it into other things.
Coach Pryor, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but.
I had him ready.
Before you were a cougar, you were a tiger. And all I have to ask is that footprint at Tiger Fieldhouse square footage wise?
It's, it's not big enough.
And it's probably the same as when you were there.
It is. They had that one, one addition. It, it needs to be done. And that's part of the reason we're here together. Because obviously we want to beat each other whenever we play each other. But, but both facilities have needs. That, that field house is obviously a huge need. Both of us would benefit from turf baseball and softball. Both of us will benefit, their, their track's in bad shape as well. I don't know if, I don't remember if you mentioned that or not. So there are some similarities, but I, I do remember that field house and it's very similar.
Well, and I, I say that because I said it, I think in another board meeting, but, and I think, you know, the, the speaker tonight made a good point again, that, you know, her, her kid who's a sophomore, this might not benefit, but the intermediate and elementary kids, it's, it's going to benefit. And, and I promise you, these numbers are, are going to grow. And if this is just athletics, not even considering CTE, fine arts, band, all that. I mean, you can kind of see where these numbers are as far as kids that are in the classroom, but oh, by the way, they're doing these extracurriculars outside of it. And if, if, if it's hard pressed to convince me that the well-rounded kid, the all-around kid gets a full experience through their K through 12 education by just being in the classroom, I don't know if I'd be where I'm at if I was just in the classroom. And I'm not saying that against anything. I'm just saying I learned to be who I am today because of the involvement that I had within my extracurriculars. And I think all of us have had those kinds of experiences probably growing up. I think all of us that are parents can see that in our own kids, whether they're graduated now or, or growing up in, in their adolescence. And so we continue, you know, I continue to get, and I'm just going to throw it out. I continue to get asked, you know, we've put this bond out and it's been voted no and all that, and, and I get that, but then, and I can't beat this anymore. The need is still there. It's not going away. The only thing that's going to happen is it's going to get more expensive. If we want to break it down, it's going to be more challenging. It's going to be more expensive. And, you know, I, I'm kind of a economics kind of guy that if the need's there, I'd rather pay the lowest dollar for it to get it fixed. So I appreciate you guys, coaches coming in and just kind of shedding some light on this. Coach Starnes, thanks for the, the detail in what the athletic programs look like in CSISD, because I think that's phenomenal. And, and the successes of what we're doing. I mean, we saw it in our fine arts here earlier. We heard about 132 pound state champion wrestler that Blaine wants her to come and flip me in front of everybody. And I'm like, you're crazy. But I mean, we have a great district of successes and the facilities have got to keep up and that's where this needs coming from. So we do appreciate that. Thank you all so much. Anything else? Appreciate it. Thank you all.
That'll bring us to I one, consideration and possible action regarding a resolution to designate non-business days under the Texas Public Information Act for 2024. Mr. Dunson.
Mr. Horak, members of the board, Dr. Harkrider. Came to you guys a workshop in January to preview this information, updates to the Texas Public Information Act. So during the last legislative session, House Bill 3033 was passed and it provided updates to the Texas Public Information Act. And it defined business days as any other day of the, any other day than a weekend, a national holiday, a state holiday, a Friday or a Monday before or after a national or state holiday. And this highlighted part here at the bottom and read up to 10 additional designated non-business days per calendar year on which administrative offices are closed or operating with minimum staffing. And this designation does need to be made by the Board of Trustees, as you've seen on the agenda with the attached resolution. I do want to draw your attention to the calendar there on the slide. This does show what the Texas Public Information Act schedule would look like for CSISD with these days designated. Now, as I mentioned, weekends, national holidays, state holidays, Friday or Monday after one of those holidays is already considered a non-business day under the Texas Public Information Act. What this resolution and what the recommendation is of the district is to designate these 10 additional days within our holiday schedule. So these are the days where our administrative staff is either not in the building or we're, we're closed and it does make it a, a little bit of a challenge to respond to public information requests as they come in. If you're not aware, we, we do comply with the Texas Public Information Act by, by receiving those requests and following the timeline established in the law, which is 10 business days to respond to those requests. So for instance, if we were to receive a request the day before winter break, which is a 10 business day holiday essentially, we, we would by law be required to respond to that request in a timely manner within the confines of the timeline that's established by the Texas Public Information Act. What this update provides is, is our ability to add those additional days to our calendar, to a, a yearly calendar. And, and so that it provides some transparency to the public when they're requesting information from us, but also gives our staff ample time to respond to those requests without undue burden on the district because our, our administrative offices are closed. And so you can see those dates are March 13th to the 15th, November 25th to, through the 27th, December 23rd, 27th, 30th, and 31st. And so with that's the recommendation that the College Station ISD Board of Trustees approve the resolution to establish non-business days pursuant to the Texas Public Information Act. Any questions?
I'd move to approve as presented.
I think we have to have official language in this motion per.
Thank you.
The state.
All right. I move to approve as presented a resolution designating College Station ISD non-business days for 2024 as required by the Texas Public Information Act.
Motion by Ms. Ege, a second by Mr. Ben. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, sir. Brings to I two, consideration and possible action regarding Senate Bill 763 passed during the 88th legislative session.
Yes, sir. Per our discussion during the workshop, my recommendation is that you approve the resolution for Senate Bill 763, which would satisfy the requirements based on legislation passed in that 88th legislative session.
Motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion by Dr. Payne, second by Mr. Decker. Any further discussion, question? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I three, consideration, discussion and possible action related to a board resolution in support of a fair and transparent accountability system. Dr. Harkrider.
Yes, sir. Per our workshop in January, my recommendation is that the board approve the resolution in support of a fair and transparent accountability system. This really has no legal ramifications outside of the board passing the resolution, which sends a message to TEA that we're not on board with the current accountability system that constantly changes without notice and can extremely tardy in nature and that we're fine with an accountability system, but it needs to be fair and transparent.
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Simmons, second by Dr. Payne. Any further questions or discussion?
I would like to just say, I mean, we didn't talk about it a lot last time really, but I am very happy to, that we are making the resolution. I'm not, because, I mean, I do believe, like I think we, except for, it's not like we're saying we don't believe in some accountability. We certainly do. I'm, I'm all for some data that helps show how our school is performing, but for, but it needs to be fair, right? I think that's a big piece of this and not a moving target after the fact, you know? And so I think it, I think this is a nice way for us to back up the efforts to help, you know, kind of push back a little bit on what the state is, has been changing.
It's also basically shows support as well for the 121 school districts that filed a lawsuit against TEA commissioner for the unfair accountability system as well.
And I think for clarity, we, we mentioned it before the meeting, but that report they received in the special session was due in June, I believe. We didn't have, we didn't have star results in time, June or August. It's usually over the summer.
Right. Usually give a preliminary and then we have to give the taper at a certain timeframe. But this year, obviously there's, there's nothing but just data points because we currently do not have an accountability system.
I think that's for, for people that. I think that's for people that, like Dr. Payne pointed out with the maps, we're getting, we're paying for that. We're getting that out of our own pocket. Yet this thing that the state requires is not timely and much less timely enough for us to actually act on it but for the map data that our school district participates in.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I-4, consider approval of new administrator contract for Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommended by Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Dr. Harkrider, Board of Trustees. I'm here to ask that you consider and approve a new administrative contract for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. This candidate that we are asking you to approve, and this new contract brings 26 years of total education experience, 14 years at central office, seven years as a principal, and overall brings a wealth of experience from outside of College Station to really join an already outstanding team. Now, this position comes from major feedback from our principals, asking for additional support. Feedback from our CNI department saying we need more help so that we can serve our staff and students in a better manner and to the level of what you already but want to get to as far as an excellent and premier district, and we want to be able to sustain that. So we are asking that you approve Ms. Penae Leifer as the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning for College Station ISD.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Simmons. Any further discussion or questions?
Not necessarily a question, but just on the discussion standpoint, you know, I've had a couple of folks approach me with concerns about, you know, adding to central office and additional cost and so forth. And a couple of things come to mind. Number one is that when we were going through our superintendent search, one of the common, I added several people who used to work for CSISD and left for their opportunities was that there wasn't necessarily, not because of what anybody did wrong or anything else in central office, but there just, there weren't enough bodies to take on all the responsibilities that existed. And that, and even unless things have changed drastically in the last couple of years since we looked at it, we still, comparative to most, the vast majority of districts our size, have a small central office. And so when it comes to budgetary concerns, which are always a concern, I think this, this position is something that is needed and something that can really add to the, you know, add to our district.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Welcome to College Station ISD.
May you want to say anything?
Hi, Ms. Penae Leifer. What I'd like to say is I feel very privileged and honored to serve College Station ISD. I look forward to working with Dr. Harkrider, his team, and all of the staff here. I want to make you work for, I just need to continue to do great things in this district. I'm really excited. I appreciate it.
That brings us to I-5, consider approval of new administrator contract for Executive Director of Special Services as recommended by Superintendent of Schools.
Something really important to note with this position is that this department has been without a leader to establish expectations, accountability, accessibility, guidance, and what a, what campuses need. They've been out with a leader for months. I'll have to acknowledge that Special Services stepped up. They went shoulder to shoulder with each other to fill the gap. And you can't ask more from a department that when you're understaffed, they all came together to make sure that kids never lost time with their needs and accommodations and that staff was still developed and supported. So we are definitely proud that we found a candidate that has 21 years of educational experience, eight in central office, eight in the principal seat, and she also has diagnostician experience. It is our recommendation that Mrs. Kristi Bowdre join our team in College Station ISD.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Mr. Ben. Any further discussion?
Actually, I do have, like, just one quick question. I mean, I know it kind of follows up a little bit on what Mr. Ben said. It's really for you, Mr. Dr. Harkrider. I know we've had one iteration of an org chart change, kind of as we have been in transition here, as we fit the new people in there. Do you see that changing at all over the next, the rest of this year?
Yeah, we'll, we'll live in that org chart probably for the next three months and get a feel for what we feel like works best with each one of our folks. And then we'll make some changes, more than likely, June or July to be finalized for the new school year.
As we bring in the new people. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Welcome to College Station ISD.
I think I told Kristi during the interview process, trying to find an Executive Director of Spet Services is kind of like looking for the Easter Bunny. They're, they're just not out there. It's a very tough position that a lot of people do not want any part of. And we found like, we, well, we know, we found a great one. Kristi, would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity. I've heard wonderful rain about College Station ISD, and I'm really excited. I always know you're going to be great, and your interview community is fun, and you're having a great time while you're talking about things that I want to do. Thank you all for talking to me.
I-6, consider approval of new administrator contract for Director of Human Resources as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
So as we know, Mr. Simak accepted the position of Assistant Superintendent of Operations, which would open that position. We have the opportunity to recommend an individual professional that has 26 years of educational experience, two at central office, nine in the principal seat, and has a wealth of knowledge both on the curriculum and instruction, but also the coaching and the HR side. We would like to recommend Mrs. Bridget Cooper to take the spot of Director of HR. I've had, I've had the honor and pleasure to work with her in this district, and I look forward to working with you and alongside of you in the future.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Ege. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Bridget, would you like to say anything? I figured that.
I just, like, walk, I'm confident, I'm looking forward, taking, and you're bringing me in our, I'm always sure.
And it is exciting, for those of you who don't know, Bridget was born and raised here in College Station. So it's pretty cool that we get to keep her here with us a little bit longer.
All right. I-7, consider approval of new administrator contract for Assistant Principal at Spring Creek Elementary as recommended by Superintendent of Schools.
So as Mrs. Choppa takes over the principalship at Spring Creek, she has the ability to really add to her team and her vision. And we come to you recommending an educator that has total 12 years academic experience, involves math interventionist. She has actually been at Spring Creek in her career. She's also been a part of Teacher Leadership Academy curriculum writing team mentor teacher, and she was also Teacher of the Year. We would like to recommend Mrs. Melanie Young as the Assistant, Assistant Principal of Spring Creek Elementary.
Motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Ege. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations, Mrs. Young.
Sean, would you like to say something?
I mean, not really, but I'm just really excited to get started and jump in and see where we made it in a few years that I've been gone, and it's pretty, pretty smart.
Yeah. Well, and I want to say that I don't throw out a lot of public compliments, and I dang sure don't do it for lip service, but she was by far the best Assistant Principal interview I've ever sat on in my entire career. And I promise you, I'm not just saying that. You were very impressive. We're thrilled to see what you guys are going to do at Spring Creek, and we're excited because I know the future's right there. Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody. That'll bring us to J-1, consideration, discussion, possible approval of bond underwriters for municipal bond underwriting services, and further authorizes the superintendent and/or CFO to contract with these underwriters on and as needed basis for various bond sales, both new money and/or refunding for a period of three years with the option to extend for an additional two years. Thank you for that language, Mrs. Drawes.
I thought you might like that. Thank you, Mr. Horak. So in the workshop today, you heard from Ms. Aragon of Hilltop Securities, our financial advisor, of a request for qualification process that we went through for underwriting services. She also described the two methods with which the school district can sell bonds, that being either under-negotiated or competitive, went over the pros and cons of each of those methods and why we might choose them. So we went through a request for qualification, had 22 different firms provide information. We had a team of three, Ms. Aragon, Carmela Schaefer, our Director of Purchasing, and myself, that scored those and looking for a pool of underwriters for which we could select from over the next several years. We actually are asking for a period of three years with the option to extend this pool for two more. That would get us through the bond sales that are upcoming. Of the 22, it was kind of a natural break at 12 firms that we're asking to be in that pool, and that you would authorize either the superintendent or the CFO to make the selection of those firms should we decide to go a negotiated method of sale. So with that, and I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Simmons. Any further discussion, questions?
Just a comment that I appreciated, the presentation and workshop. I mean, one, that you did the evaluation to get this, this list, and then, two, you did a good explanation of it earlier, so.
I'll try to accuse myself, I'll try to accuse myself for professional affiliations.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. That will bring us to item J-2, consider approval of a contract for a transportation, GPS, and student accountability system from TransFinder for a three-year period with the option to extend two years using SR3 funds in the general fund. Ms. Drawes.
Thank you. So College Station ISD covers a little over 100 square miles and transports well over 4,000 students to and from school every day. So that requires the use of technology to make sure that we are efficiently and safely accounting, not only transporting these students, but accounting for them on a daily basis. The software that our transportation department has used for the past 10 years has been in place, and we've managed with it, but we felt like it was time to see what other technology was out there and how it might improve the operations and the accountability of our students. So Transportation Department looked at a number of providers, narrowed it down to two, both of which would improve our operations from where we are now. But they then brought those two recommendations to an outside team that included Mr. Dunson from Communications. It included technology as well as myself. And we went through the differences. So we were unanimous in our decision that TransFinder was the best option for College Station ISD. Doesn't mean it was the lowest price. We were looking for what the cost is going to be over a three-year period because this is a long-term commitment for the district. It's going to take a lot to transfer it over to this. So we're looking at using it for well over that three years. But the things that set that apart, that TransFinder apart from the others that we looked at, was the parent app. It allows for registration forms to be accessed through that parent app after the registration. The multilingual communication in that app was a good seller for us. The enhanced geo-fencing, and what I mean by that is, on the app, the parent, although they can't track the bus everywhere it goes, they can look at, we want to know when the bus that my child rides passes this particular intersection or this point of interest. And I know it's going to take about 10 minutes for that bus to get to our stop, and they can send their child out. So some very enhanced geo-fencing. And then the GPS signal goes across multiple providers. So it ensures as our bus goes within this 100 square miles that we have service everywhere that we go. So those were the things that we looked at that kind, that put it over the top. So what we're looking at is the first-year cost, which has equipment, training, and putting everything in place, is $314,140, of which we have identified SR3 funds to pay for about $200,000 of that. What we're looking is all of the upfront cost would be SR3 because, you know, those funds end in, end of September of 2024. And then the remainder of that first-year cost in year two and three would be the general fund. And we do have budgeted in there for the software that we are currently having, so this is not 100% addition to the general fund. So what we are asking tonight is for your consideration for the purchase of TransFinder for a period of three years with the option to extend for an additional two years if agreeable by both sides.
Thanks for putting it, this is a lot of work to figure this out, but obviously we care about kids' safety, transportation, getting to and from school, and then making life a little easier and better for the, for the parents. So thanks for all of the work that went into that, and I motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. McAdams. Any further discussion? I will say the cellular data, multiple carriers will be tested around the Wellburn and Reuter Road area. So that will be interesting to see where we're at.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That'll bring us to K-1, consider authorizing the superintendent to enter into final negotiations and contract with VLK Architects for the architectural services related to the 23-bond referendum construction projects.
Thank you, once again. So Policy CV Legal, as well as Government Code 2269, requires that school districts have an architect or engineer for any construction project or building alteration. The, a new construction project would be $100,000 limit, and an alteration or addition is a $50,000 limit. So in 2021, the district went out for RFQ for architectural services. Based on that, VLK Architect, who had done extensive work already throughout the district, rose to the top as the most qualified and demonstrated competence for our projects. So the board approved them for the projects that were in the 2021 bond program. So now we have the 2023 bond program. Since that RFQ, they've done nothing but enhanced their knowledge of College Station ISD and our buildings. They conducted the long-range facility condition assessment in the fall of 2022. They worked and prepared the cost estimates for the 2023 Long Range Facility and Bond Committee that resulted in that successful November 2023 bond. So this additional work just enhanced their, our confidence in them as the best architect to complete these 2023 bond projects as well. So we're asking that you name them as the architect of record, authorizing the superintendent to finalize any negotiations on their contract and enter into that contract.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Mr. Decker. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. K-2, consider authorizing the superintendent to enter into final negotiations and enter into a contract with Armco Industries for engineering services related to roofing projects for a two-year period with the option to extend. a two-year period with the option to extend for an additional one-year term.
Thank you. Again, referencing that same policy CV legal and Government Code 2269, we have the authority to use either an architect or an engineer. Some projects seem to be more appropriate for an engineer, and roofing is one of those that sometimes going directly with that engineer is, is better for the district. So Armco Industries came highly recommended by not only VLK Architects, but some other architectural firms that we were in contact with, other school districts, as well as Texas A&amp;M University. So because of that, you as a board authorized us to enter into an agreement with Armco Industries to be our Engineer of Record for any roofing projects that related from that horrible hail storm that we can't seem to get rid of. We keep having to do projects related to that. But those are coming to an end. We still have some work there, but now what we've identified is the roofing projects we're working on now don't always necessarily result from that hail storm. So we will be using either 2023 bond funds or some of the 2021 possibly, as well as the general fund, depending on what that need is. So tonight, what we're asking for is an authorization for Dr. Harkrider to enter into final negotiations with Armco to supply those engineering services for the district outside of the hail damage that we already have for a period of two years with the option to extend for one additional year.
Motion approved as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. McAdams. Any further questions, discussion?
Just a comment that I'm glad to hear they're highly recommended because we've had lots of roof issues.
We have. And they've been very, worked very well with us with insurance, those claims, and we've been very pleased.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. K three. Consider approval of the construction project delivery method for the additions and renovations to AMCHS, CSHS, Rock Prairie Elementary, and construction of the CTE Center Phase Two. Ms. Drawes.
Thank you. I'm going to keep referencing policy CV legal and Government Code 2269. This requires the Board of Directors to, or the Board of Trustees, to name the procurement method or the delivery method that we will go about for various construction projects. If you recall, last month, you as a board approved a change to policy CV local that said these construction projects that we have the authority to use competitive seal proposal or job order contracting on anything, if we use anything other than that, that we need to come back to you. So in working with VLK Architect, as well as Mr. Hall, we have identified that construction manager at risk is, is a better option or procurement method for the projects that were listed there. That's A&amp;M Consolidated High School Edition, College Station High School Edition, Rock Prairie Elementary, and the CTE Phase Two. So with that, we are asking for your approval for us to use CMAR for these, these construction projects in the 2023 bond program.
Motion approved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Simmons. Any further discussion or question?
Somewhat related question, but what are we looking at kind of timeframe as far as when contracts be entered into, construction will begin, so forth?
So this, we've named the architect tonight, so they will start working on that. And their CMAR, one of the first things we will start doing is working on the qualifications that we're looking for and try to select that contract manager to, to work with the architect. So this had to occur before we can start getting, delving into the details of that design on these particular projects. I do know Rock Prairie is scheduled for to start, I think, summer 2025. So we've got another year on that one.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
K four. Consider authorizing a contract for a gravity drain line installation at the district nadatorium with Ed Phillips Fleming in the amount of $57,687.80 using 21 bond funds. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Harkrider, Mr. Horak, and members of the board. This is the first of two projects that are within the 21-bond package tonight. We'd just like to make a quick note of saying thank you to the, to the voters out there who make these, these bond projects possible. This particular item is for a project related to the nadatorium complex. As you may recall, we've already accomplished the boiler replacement over there for the water, keeping the water warm over there, warm enough to swim in, as well as the full nadatorium renovation project. So we've, we've finished those. We still have some funds available for the nadatorium that have to be spent exclusively for that, that complex over there. So we're picking up a couple of extra projects here, and that's what this one is. This is for the installation of a new six-inch PVC gravity drain line running from the lowest point under the pool out to the exterior of the building to assist us with water removal under the pool and entire building as needed. It's a, it's an old building. We have had water leaks up under there before, and it's a big crawl space under, underneath there. So this would help us a lot. The term gravity drain line simply means we don't have to work, to rely upon like electric pumps to get all that water out. So this would help us from a maintenance standpoint tremendously. We did have Ed Phillips, who is our Master Service Agreement selected plumber for the district, give us some pricing for this. The work would take place during the spring of 2024 and would utilize 2021 bond nadatorium funding to accomplish. I would like to note, too, that this would not require the pool to be shut down, so we won't have to miss any practices or anything. And by the way, good luck to the Tiger Swim team this week at State. So it is recommended that the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees consider approval of a contract award to Ed Phillips Plumbing in the amount of $57,687.80 for the installation of a new six-inch PVC gravity drain line under the nadatorium pool at CSMS, utilizing 2021 bond nadatorium funds. And I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Motion approved as presented.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Ege. Any questions, comments?
I'll need to recuse myself as a result of a professional affiliation.
Good. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. K five. Consider award of CSP 24-006 for additions to the Transportation Center parking lot to Tucker Construction in the amount not to exceed $494,770 using 21 bond funds. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Horak, Dr. Harkrider, members of the board. This is the second of the two 21-bond projects this evening. This particular project is, that was identified early on in the 21-bond planning as a significant need, was for some extra parking. When we buy all of these buses for Hector out at the Transportation Center, we have to have a place to put them. So we've, now, now we're starting to get some of them finally delivered after waiting for quite a while. And so this, this particular project would account for a little over 33,000 square feet of seven-inch-thick heavy-duty concrete paving out there would be added on to our existing bus parking area and would also include new fencing and lighting to accommodate that, that new area. This project is being processed as a competitive seal proposal, which means that it was advertised as required by statute, and proposal packages were opened on February 6th, 2024. We received, we received bids from 10 separate general contractors, all listed off in the memo there. The evaluation team consisted of myself, Director of Purchasing Carmela Schaefer, Construction Inspector Brian Beal, and VLK Architect Melissa Fleming. The proposals were reviewed and scored that same afternoon, and you can, if you're interested, you can see VLK Architects' recommendation letter, tab sheet, and proposal scoring sheet attached for reference. Tucker Construction received the highest overall score and is the recommendation of this committee. They have successfully accomplished several projects for us over the years, all kinds of paving, concrete projects all over the school district. They've done a great job. They have a great reputation with us for finishing projects on time and within budget. We would like to add $20,000 to the overall budget for owner's contingency to cover any unforeseen circumstances that we might come across as we process that. So it is recommended that the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees consider approval of award of RFCSP 24-006 for the Transportation Center parking additions to Tucker Construction in the amount of $474,770 and an additional $20,000 for owner's contingency for a total budget of $494,770 utilizing 2021 bond funds. Love to answer any questions you might have.
Motion approved as presented.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Mr. Decker. Any further questions or comments?
I'll need to recuse myself as a result of a professional affiliation.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. That'll bring us to item L, executive session. We'll see y'all when we get back. Thank y'all for being here, and congratulations to the new contracts here in College Station ISD. Huh? Oh, you didn't? You took it off? Oh, no, we're done. We are done. Man, we could, I never did this. This is great. [laughing].